All right, it is 6:00 PM and I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is June 6th, 2022, and it is just after 6:00 PM. And I'm going to start with roll call, please.
Alter?
Here.
Burgess?
Here.
Harmson?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right, welcome again back, councilors, and welcome to everyone that is here in person and those that are looking through social media. I wanted to start with 2A, which are proclamations. And 2A is going to be Juneteenth, National Freedom Day. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring persons enslaved in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, almost two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery. And whereas Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings, some communities purchased land for Juneteenth celebrations, such as Emancipation Park in Houston, Texas. And as freed families immigrated from Texas to other parts of the United States, they carry the Juneteenth celebration with them. And whereas Juneteenth has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called "Juneteenth", combined in the words "June" and "19th", and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas, beginning in 2022, the city of Iowa City officially recognized Juneteenth as a city holiday. And whereas, Juneteenth reflects our community's deep belief in liberty and equality for all individuals. And whereas, Juneteenth celebrates the strength and resolve of African-Americans throughout history and is an opportunity to honor African-American culture, art, history, and achievement as all benefit from a greater understanding and appreciation of the experiences of others. And whereas, the city of Iowa City, municipalities within Johnson County, Black Voices Project, and many other organizations are hosting free public events to commemorate Juneteenth. Details regarding all events can be found on the city of Iowa City website. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim and recognize Juneteenth, 2022, as Juneteenth, National Freedom Day, in Iowa City and encourage community members to participate in the commemorative events. And to accept this award is going to be Siri, Supervisor Royce Ann Porter, and Tracy John Sargent, so please come up.
You all can have some remarks there.
Absolutely.
Would you guys like to go first?
No.
Hello. I want to begin by thanking Mayor Bruce Teague and our city council for affirming and directly recognizing through a proclamation the profound weight and power of this historical day, Juneteenth, June 19th, 1865. I would be remiss if I did not directly address the reality that with my identity as a white American comes both the invaluable privilege of safety when I raise my voice for injustice and therefore also the enormous responsibility to actively work towards eradicating the systemic racism that in many ways still exists in our society 157 years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed. With this understanding of my identity and of the critical responsibility that follows, I am honored to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Human Rights Commission. I take a moment of personal privilege, however, to share a few of my own private thoughts. For those of you who don't know me, I am a public school teacher who recognizes that as humans, our earliest conversations on topics as deeply troubling and complex as our nation's history of slavery are what we bear deep within us as we grow up to form relationships and craft the opinions on which we ultimately act. And the reality is that I am speaking to you in a time when the freedom of educators to teach historical truth is actively eroding as legislative restrictions pile on. And the result, many teachers who feel forced to abstain from teaching basic historical truths that can and should induce feelings of horror and embarrassment, truths that should raise questions about early Americans' motivations and questions about just how much progress we have made as a nation when we consider the structures of oppression that are so fiercely protected today. James Baldwin said, "I don't know what most white people feel. I can only conclude what they feel from the state of their institutions. I don't know if the Board of Education hates black people, but I know the textbooks they give my children to read and the schools we have to go to." End quote. As a teacher, I fear intensely this dwindling freedom to teach truth in our education institutions, to answer questions with truth, and to help students navigate their resulting emotions that are both painful, both a painful consequence of understanding truth, but also the foundation for motivated work towards seeking and treating each other as equals. I do find this deeply unsettling. But this is why I also feel immense gratitude towards our mayor and towards our city council, the leaders of our community who have chosen to celebrate, remember, learn from this historical truth. Juneteenth not only commemorates the past but also calls us into action today. This is why we must understand the importance of our city's choice to enthusiastically celebrate this Day of Independence, fiercely fight to achieve the equality that should have been delivered on June 19th, 157 years ago, and why we must refuse to teach anything but historical truth so that all of our children can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Royce Ann Porter, supervisor for Johnson County. I just want to say thank you for the proclamation. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You all know, we as black people know that we are very excited about Juneteenth being Iowa City making it a holiday here in the city as well as Johnson County. So for that, for us, that's huge. We have made some strides in our county, in our cities. We have a black mayor. We have had a black mayor pro temp, a black county supervisor, as well as North Liberty having a black lady, Rakesha Harrington, on the city council. And we've come so far. I've been in this county for 33 years now. And where I know where we come from and I know where we're going, I just want to thank everybody for the support that we do receive. I do want to tell you that this year's celebration for Juneteenth will be right outside these doors on this street, blocked off 14 East Washington Street. We are going to celebrate Juneteenth. It will be our biggest Juneteenth. There will be food, bouncy houses, vendors, and we also will have a fashion show. We will have some talent and entertainment, DJ, comedian, and that is at 5:00 PM on June 17th. We ask that the city come out. We ask that you come and support. We ask that you not only support us from the hours of 5:00 to 9:00, but on the Pad Mall, we're going to bring a band from Chicago called The New Shining Star, who do a tribute to Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. It's going to be really nice. So we ask that you come out. Please tell others. And on Saturday, I'll let, he'll come up here and tell you about his event on Saturday, but there's also two programs on Saturday for Juneteenth. We are taking Juneteenth to the neighborhoods. It will be in Iowa City and it will be in Correville. People say, "Why are you doing that?" Because sometimes people don't have transportation to get out and go, so we're going into the community. So the community event for Correville will be from 11:00 to 4:00, and it's at the Morrison Tea Park. Please come out, same thing. We will have food, bouncy houses. There's going to be a Juneteenth play. So we ask that you come out and support as well. So if you can't get to Iowa City and you live in Correville, come to either one of them. There's going to be lots of events going on, so thank you.
Tracy, you want to come up?
Hi, my name is Tracy Sargent. I am the founder and executive director of the Multicultural Development Center of Iowa. I really appreciate this. This is my first year of officially being on the planning committee, and I want to recognize about 60 individuals that came together to make this happen. Obviously, I'm not going to list all of their names, but I want to make sure that people recognize that there's a lot of people behind the scenes that are making this happen. The event will take place on Saturday, June 18th, at Mercer Park, from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. So as Royce Ann mentioned, there's going to be food and bouncy houses. My organization will be there to encourage kids to look at STEM as possible career and degree pathways. We'll have a financial literacy there as well. Iowa City Public Library will have their mobile bookmobile there as well. So plenty to do to celebrate and become educated on what Juneteenth is. And of course, we have some T-shirts that we're going to be giving away that I am especially proud of. I designed those this year, and I think it's a beautiful design that we can wear throughout the year to remind us of this important holiday. Thank you.
Thanks to all of you. Really appreciate it. All right, we are on to our next proclamation to be, which is LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer or questioning, intersex, and asexual people come from all walks of life and all racial, ethnic, and religious backgrounds. And whereas LGBTQIA persons are family members, friends, coworkers, and community members. And whereas, the city of Iowa City is committed to uphold diversity, social justice, equity, mutual respect, and safety for all who live, work, do business in, visit, or enjoy this community. And whereas, the city of Iowa City has been recognized by the Human Rights Campaign's Municipal Equity Index for the past seven years for its outstanding support of LGBTQIA individuals in public policy, services, and leadership. And whereas, the city of Iowa City will show that commitment and support by offering programming, free yard signs, flying pride flags at City Hall, and city park pool from June 1 through June 30th, enlightening the Public Works Building and Pad Mall stage in rainbow pride colors. Whereas, with the goal of coming together in person at last, Iowa City Pride, www.iowacitypride.org backslash, will hold its citywide pride celebration on June 18th, 2022. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 to be LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And accepting this proclamation is our Iowa City Pride interim president, Jewel Amos.
A little short, I need to bring this down. Thank you all for this. Hopefully someday, we won't be standing here having to proclaim anything. It'll just be part of everyday culture, and we don't have an event, we just, you know, forget about it. That's, you know, reality is hopefully sooner than later. So it sounds like June 18th is the place to be in Iowa City, just down here for these guys, and then go up the street for us. We're going to party till 10 o'clock late, and our parade's at noon, so you're just going to have to go back and forth as much as you can all day long and enjoy as much as you can that whole weekend. We've got lots of events the week of to celebrate our accomplishments. So if you go to Iowa City Pride on Facebook, we have our events listed there. And I'd just like to invite everybody to come and enjoy with us, and we're there to build bridges and make Iowa City as friendly as possible. So I appreciate this. Thanks.
Thank you. Item number three through seven is our consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Taylor.
All right. Would anyone from the public like to address topics that are in the consent calendar? If so, please come to the podium. I will let people know that at the back of the room, there are little stickers that you can pre-write your name and fill it out. But when you do come to the podium, either place your sticker there or write your information there. Anyone on the, that is online, would like to address this topic? Please raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you. All right. And I'm assuming there is no one from the public that want to address this topic? All right, we're going to move to council discussion. Roll call, please.
Can I say one thing?
Oh, absolutely.
So the one thing that I would note is that inflation is hitting the city, and we see that in one of the items that we're approving here, which is the Rochester Street reconstruction. So as we look to our budget and the future, we need to be, we're going to need to be mindful that not, that inflation is at the grocery stores, everybody else, it's also hitting our projects.
Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero. We are on to item number eight, and this is an opportunity for its community comment. And this is an opportunity from those in the community that want to come and make a comment on any item that is not on our agenda, so now would be the time to do that. Welcome. And if you're online, please raise your hand as well.
Good evening. My name is Joe Riley with the Iowa City Downtown District, Iowa City. Thank you, Mayor Teague and council, for having public comment. I've come here on behalf of the Iowa City Downtown District Restaurants, asking and reminding the city council to take up reviewing the city's current patio sidewalk cafe permit fees in the public right of way as a part of our, as a part of your strategic planning. We do acknowledge that there has been financial impacts caused by inflation in both the public and private sector. We are also grateful for the waiver of these fees to our businesses as most recently as 2021, 2020, as well as Washington Street during its renovation, Pad Mall during its renovation, and soon to come, to our understanding, the Dubuque Street renovation businesses will also receive a waiver. But we at the Iowa City Downtown District are asking for something that is more long-term. Earlier this year, the Iowa City Downtown District filed a public records request on the revenue collected from these permit fees over the last decade. We learned the total annual revenue collected on these permitting fees has been as low as $49,000 and as high as $75,000. We do acknowledge that the anticipated city budgetary constraints coming in the next couple of fiscal years, and we also want to pose a few questions. If this is a vital revenue line item to the city's general fund, can it withstand fluctuations year to year like this? Wouldn't now, during the strategic planning process, be the time to shore up revenue line items and have sources that are consistent year over year? If large waivers for our businesses have been workable five out of the last 10 years, wouldn't that point to some flexibility in the program that could be an easy win for businesses, council, and downtown? At the very least, Iowa City Downtown District is asking the council to take up this discussion on their agenda and make the determination, can the city withstand a permanent reduced revenue from the sidewalk cafe patio fees in the public right of way as a way to help these businesses? Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll invite anyone up that want to talk about any item that is not on the agenda. And also, there is a timer up front for anyone. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is Midia Malarcon Avila, and I'm here in behalf of Escucha Mi Voz. We want to talk about what happened with the Johnson County Direct Assistant Program. And I just want to give you some information. So from May 24 to, sorry, April 24 to May 27, when the applications was open, Escucha Mi Voz helped more than 630 applicants to fill up their applications. About, I'm sorry, I have to take this because I can't read. About, from that number, we also have contacted another 400 people, and unfortunately, they was not able to apply. And the reason of that, there was several reasons, but the first thing that we find out, we, many of them, they could not have a valid identification. If you are aware, many of the councils are still closed, still in pandemia. So many people have not been able to have their identification for their countries in the past two years. Also, the other, the big issue was to be able to prove their income, despite the Johnson County was very helpful by providing self-certification to they was able to give it to their employers, a letter for them to sign. Many of these employers did not want to sign these letters. So we know for sure we have more than 400 people that was not able to apply because a combination of all these things. The other big issue that we find out was the residency. As you already know, many people who live several peoples in one house, all the bills only come in the name of one person, but that is some of the issues that we encounter. From all that applications that we did, we was able to help a lot of immigrants, refugees, 70% of them belongs to the Iowa City. So we are asking the city to please ask the Johnson County, not just for the Direct Assistant Program, but for the General Assistant, to reconsider, to take down some of the barriers. So many people who doesn't even have a house, they're homeless, can apply for all the Direct Assistant that they can provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to translate for Ninoska.
Great, thanks. Welcome.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ninosca Campos y soy miembro de Escucha Mi Voz.
Hello, my name is Ninosca Campos, and I'm a member of Escucha Mi Voz.
Le voy a explicar un poco de lo que fue la asistencia general del programa de John Sincony con las personas que aplicaron con Escucha Mi Voz.
I'm going to let you know a little bit of what the Escucha Mi Voz did by helping people with the Direct Assistant Program.
Donde ustedes aprobaron millón y medio de dólares para ayudarle a los trabajadores.
Since you guys provide 1.5 millions to give you for this program.
De parte de Escucha Mi Voz contactamos a 1,036 personas sin migrantes.
Escucha Mi Voz contact 1,000, about 1,100 people, immigrants.
Ayudamos a aplicar 631 personas porque 400 personas no llenaban todos los requisitos establecidos que pedía el condado.
We helped around 635 people because 400 people was not able to apply for the program.
El condado dice que podría rechazar muchas solicitudes porque las personas no llenan todos los requisitos.
The county might be able to reject many of these applications because they don't have all the requirements.
Porque tienen el papeleo incompleto.
Because the paperwork is not complete.
No queremos el método lotería.
We still don't like the lottery, the lottery program.
Estoy aquí para pedirle a la ciudad que haga todo lo posible.
We are, we're here to ask the city to do your best work.
Y lo que esté a su alcance para que se acepten las 2,600 solicitudes de las personas que aplicaron.
To help us to be able to provide the 2,560 people who apply to the program.
Y que le pidan al condado que por favor hagan lo correcto.
And to please ask the Johnson County to help us with this.
Ya que uno de los retos ante las personas cuando llenaban su solicitud fue la autocertificación a que las personas que les pagan en efectivo.
So one of the big challenges that we have was the self-certification for all the people who receive income in cash and they are contract workers.
Sus jefes no querían firmar ni firmaron las cartas de autocertificaciones. Ellos tuvieron que firmar por sí solos.
Their bosses didn't want to sign up, so they have to sign by themselves as self-employers.
Entonces que tomen ese detalle en cuenta, gracias.
So we want they take that in count. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I see Brian Williams online. Welcome.
Hey, thank you for addressing me. My name is Brian Williams. I currently stay in Iowa City. I have concerns about any resolutions concerning the sale and consumption of alcohol on city property. Let me be clear, I am not against alcohol consumption. Whoa, not sure what's going on here. Okay, has my comment started?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Brian Williams. I currently stay in Iowa City. I have concerns about any resolutions concerning the sale and consumption of alcohol on city property. Let me be clear, I am not against alcohol consumption. I'm sure some of you enjoy consuming alcohol from time to time. Today, I had a long day at work, so I am currently consuming some alcohol myself. However, alcohol sometimes does funny things to people. Sometimes when people consume alcohol, they become agitated or disruptive. These usually minor, mild disruptions to civil society sometimes invite police intervention. So just this morning, I watched a video filmed in our city on June 3rd, just three days ago. This video shows a young woman, by my estimation approximately 110 pounds, drunken, handcuffed, and therefore defenseless, being punched repeatedly by a very large Iowa City police officer. Again, I am not against alcohol consumption in general. I do, however, have concerns that if you increase the availability of alcohol in public, that we're going to see more of these extrajudicial beatings of women by the brave men on your police force. I would hate for your city to become known as the quote-unquote "that place where big tough policemen repeatedly punch tiny drunken defenseless women." That would be a very unfortunate reputation to acquire, and so I believe you should take some proactive measures before increasing the sale of beer and wine in public areas in our city. To start, I would offer the suggestion that you teach your heroic policemen that it's generally seen as "bad" to repeatedly punch tiny drunken defenseless women, especially in public areas where citizens are increasingly filming police encounters. You could, for example, create a PowerPoint with slides titled something along the lines of, "When you repeatedly punch tiny drunken defenseless women, people tend to get angry and bother us with phone calls, social media comments, and public comments at city council meetings." Furthermore, I have concerns that if we continue to see your gallant LEOs repeatedly punching tiny drunken defenseless women, eventually, other drunken citizens might get fed up and intervene in these policing actions. It might even get to the point where drunken onlookers decide enough is enough and collectively bum rush via arresting slash punching officers to prevent harm to the tiny defenseless drunken women. That would be bad. For these reasons, I firmly believe that you should delay the increased implementation of beer and wine sales on public land in Iowa City. I urge you to train your anabolic steroid-riddled police force to not repeatedly punch drunken defenseless tiny women, but to instead realize that they're in a vulnerable state and deserve help from the people that are sworn to protect them, even if they're allegedly headbutting windows when the heroic meathead cops make initial contact. If you find that you cannot persuade your warrior cops to stop repeatedly punching drunken defenseless tiny women, you could instead perhaps convince them to start a...
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Welcome.
Hi, good evening, council. I'm here to talk about the beating which occurred last weekend on June 3rd, which, I mean, it's weird how... it's weird how things work out that two years to the night that peaceful demonstrators were assaulted by ICPD officers, another assault of someone who wasn't even doing anything to officers occurred. And I say that because before I drove to this meeting and before I came in, I watched the body cam footage, which was just released. And that messed me up a lot because it triggered a lot within me because it's clear from the footage that all that woman did before she was handcuffed, because the video is 14 minutes, within a minute, she is handcuffed by an officer. She's, and you know what led up to her being handcuffed? She's sitting away, with her body away from the officer like this, just standing there for several moments before the officer, someone who is one of Jeffrey, through, city manager Jeff Ruin's thugs, slaps handcuffs on her. And, I mean, it's clear that the only reason they did that, that all of the force that's used within this video, because I actually, I only watched four minutes of it because it bothered me so much. But it's clear that they, they used, they handcuffed her, they used force on her. Everything that they did that violated her rights as a human being was because they were irritated at her. They just saw some defenseless drunk girl and they needed to prove something to themselves. I don't know. But it's clear that they, what they did to her was because they were annoyed by her. I'm somebody that annoys police. I was gonna come here tonight and be like, yeah, last meeting when I held up a sign between, behind the police chief with him as a clown, I was gonna apologize for that. I'm not apologizing for that anymore because he's a fucking clown. And it's honestly the fact that that's the kind of department that he leads? I'm sorry. Why, why is this acceptable for an officer to powd a girl like that in her head? Why is that acceptable? That's Jeff Ruin policing. Is that okay with you all? That little girl, like, that young women are beaten by someone who's two, three times their size? Is that the kind of city that you want? I mean, we've been at this for two years. It's been over two years since the uprising in 2020 happened. We're no different. We're no different at all. Jeff Ruin just came in and was like, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help the police department? We are no better. ICPD are thugs? And the fact that this is the mindset that goes throughout the department, it's sickening. Y'all need to do something because they could be your kids.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, I flipped you off because the last meeting, you read a proclamation declaring how great ICPD was.
Please state your name.
You know what my name is. My name is Noah. And yes. Anyways, so, I started at that because last meeting you started saying ICPD is such a great community. You said, "community," fuck. I also watched the video before this meeting. The body cam, I already watched the video. And next time a defenseless woman gets attacked by cops, I hope the cops get bomb robbed. I hope, I hope your cops get fucking beat like that. Next time they start beating defenseless handcuffed women. Handcuff defenseless anybody, I hope. The citizens rise up and show the cops who actually runs the city, and it's not the fucking cops. And you need to actually control your damn cops. You need to defund your damn cops. You need to actually make a community safe, because the cops clearly aren't making a community safe. The cops don't, they don't, there's no, there is no attempt at de-escalation. They start off, just straight up walks them and just, just start handcuffing this woman. What the hell is she supposed to do? She's being attacked violently, violently arrested. Don't even say a damn word to her, they just grab her. And you're like, oh, well, oh, we got kicked. Oh, no! We got kicked because we were violently attacking this person, just dragged to the ground, and she had the audacity to try to defend herself from a bunch of overpowered, oversized thugs that were attacking her. And she didn't want to be attacked by them and then decided to keep doing that. You should be damn ashamed of yourselves. That last meeting that you came out here with a proclamation saying that ICPD makes the community safe and they help protect us and they defend the defenseless, when we've all seen the video of them beating the defenseless people in the cop cars. And then having the audacity to charge them the felony with up to 11 years of prison, you should have the audacity to not want to be beaten by cops. Be ashamed of yourselves and actually like, do something to change it. It's like dancing. It's been two years now. And this is not a laugh to me. That was literally two years to date that they gassed us. The exact same time that they were gassing us. When that ambulance, that night that they gassed us, when the ambulance was coming, you can see them still launching tear canisters when the ambulance was right there. That's how much they care about the safety of the community. When they caused someone to have an attack that they needed an ambulance, when the ambulance was there, they still kept launching canisters of gas and laughing. It's like, ha, let them eat gas. It's appalling. And really, obviously makes me, it just should make everyone upset. Because I was just plainly wrong.
Thank you. Welcome, Taylor, online.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
So first of all, I want to speak for, I want to speak on behalf of someone else, and then I'm going to speak for myself. I'm going to speak for someone who wanted to be heard tonight, but can't speak to you because they are worried that the police will retaliate, so they cannot speak freely. They wanted to convey, as a resident who is a black person in Iowa City, they want to make sure that everyone is seeing this event in light of their own personal experiences, as they do every time they see videos or pictures of violence toward black lives. They want to point out that that girl could be your daughter, Negan Alter, in a few years, Janice, your granddaughter, Sean, your kids, people that you know, this could be that, that, their situation. And it is a lot of people's situation, who are not as privileged as many of you. And I want to speak for myself. This is not about this incident only. I, I hope that you feel horrible for the person that this happened to, but I hope that you can't sleep at night because you know that this is the culture you've created and nurtured and ensured is preserved for the last two years and beyond, especially the last two years. You all have worked your asses off to make sure that this survived, this kind of violence. It was just in November that someone was caught on camera, a cop beating someone up while other cops stood around and watched. And what do we see? The same thing happening on the anniversary, the two-year anniversary of your cops tear gassing protesters, protesting for black lives in Iowa City. What the fuck have you been doing the last two years? What have you been doing except nurturing this? I don't want to hear one single word from you excusing what the cops did because of what this person did. It doesn't matter. Because of the circumstances, of the justification that makes it okay for someone who's paid by the city to do this to someone. It's not acceptable. This woman needed support, and this did not have to happen. And it does happen all the time, and it doesn't wind up on camera. Fuck you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Or a topic that is not on our agenda? Welcome.
Okay, Roy San Porter again, Johnson County Supervisor. Just wanted to give you a little update on the Direct Assistance Program. The Direct Assistance Program closed at 2:00 PM on Friday, May 27. Just want to let you know that there was 2,596 applications were received by the program's close. Nearly 250 additional applications were received following the program extension. Johnson County staff provided a third application assistance opportunity onsite at the county building, May 26, from 12 to 4. The rough breakdown of applications by community shows approximately 1.8,000 applications were submitted by Iowa City residents, approximately 425 applications were submitted by Corville residents, 240 applications submitted by North Liberty residents, 50 applications were from Tiffin, 20 were from Oxford, 15 from Solon, and there were other communities represented with a minimum number. So just want to let you know as a reminder, these numbers reflect self-reported mailing address. And I want to give us a pat on the back, not just Johnson County, but the city of Iowa City, because we are the only people in the state of Iowa doing anything like this, the Direct Assistance Program, to help our people who went through an economic hardship. So I would like to say thank you for what we have done. I also, too, would like to tell you that they have come before you, the Catholic workers, and let you know that there are over 400 people who could not get signatures from their employers. I ask you to ask them why. Why wouldn't an employer give you a sheet of paper stating what you made? If you made too much, then you didn't qualify for the program. So we have to look at all that instead of just saying, "Give everybody that applied some money." You have to be eligible. And if you were eligible, then you should get money. So that's why I'm here. And I'm just proud to say again that we did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on the council agenda? Please come forth now. I'm going to close the public comment, and we are on to item number nine, which is planning and zoning matters. 9A, rezoning south of Lehman Avenue and west of Sycamore Greenway. Ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 4.7 acres of property located south of Lehman Avenue and west of Sycamore Greenway from interim development, multifamily residential to neighborhood public. And I'm going to open the public hearing. And we're going to invite staff. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As the mayor stated, this is an application for rezoning. It is the area shown here in outline at the bottom of this little flag lot. So the square area is what would be rezoned. The long slender component reaching down to it is not part of the rezoning, but would be part of the conditions of this case. As the mayor stated, this is a rezoning to P1. It is one of two sites, and MidAmerican Energy Company is considering for an expansion of an electric substation in the South District. Later on in the agenda, you'll see a conditional use permit application that we're making a recommendation on as well. Again, MidAmerican is only considering one of these sites, but has two applications, since they're still working through the details of which will be the more favorable site for them. Like I said, they've been searching for one site, and this site is the one that requires a rezoning. So this shows the current zoning, which is IDRM. IDRM does not allow for electric substations currently. Basically, it would be considered a basic utility use, and so it does need to have a zoning change to it. On a previous agenda, you started considering some zoning code text changes to change what can be allowed in the P1 zone. So this would be a follow-up to that text change. They kind of work together. Not only would MidMAM be able to use that, but that is a zoning code text change this staff has considered for other reasons. When we review a rezoning, there are two criteria that we typically look at. We did that in this case, the first being consistency with a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does provide goals for efficient use of resources, including well-planned infrastructure and locating within city limits the kind of infrastructure that supports urban-style development, which of course, electricity would be a component of a successful urban density of development. The South District Plan and Comprehensive Plan indicate this area is appropriate for future residential development in the South District. And I'm sure you're aware, we've adopted a form-based code to encourage highly-connected street and trail networks and a future development in that area. Therefore, a substation is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies for efficient infrastructure and land development, as well as future land use designation in this area. We also consider compatibility with existing neighborhood character. This particular site is in a location that has not yet been developed. There are no nearby residential development in the vicinity. And as I said, a substation would be important for encouraging future growth and development in the South District. Its location is near existing transmission lines for this particular utility and adjacent to a thousand-foot buffer around the Iowa City wastewater treatment plant. Access to the site would be provided via Lehman Avenue, which is currently unimproved and are subject to the conditions to ensure that connection could be made. And installing a substation prior to the surrounding neighborhood is, staff feels, a good planning move so that as residents do move into the area, they're aware of its presence as they locate, rather than having it move into their neighborhood after they are there. As far as next steps, as I mentioned, there's a zoning code text change under consideration already by you. This would be the rezoning of the land. Under the code change, there would be a hearing needed to be held by the Board of Adjustment for a special exception for the placement of this use, and then site plan review would occur. Based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning with three conditions. Those conditions include the extension of Lehman Avenue enough so that the access could be made to the site, that the owner shall have prepared an auditor's plat of survey to align with those rezoning boundaries, to record those, and that the owner shall demonstrate to the city that there's vehicular access to the subject property from Lehman in a location approved by the city engineer. And this access shall be in the form of a temporary easement agreement to be released upon dedication of right-of-way when the land is final-platted and eventually developed with a more thorough street network. At its May 4 meeting, by a vote of 6 to 0, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval with these conditions. And that concludes my staff report. I do not have a signed CZA, so I don't know if other staff have received that or-
That is my understanding as well. We do not have a CZA in hand now, and this item cannot move forward until we have that.
So the applicant's representatives are here, so perhaps they'll produce items they have a chance to speak.
Okay, we'll call up the applicants if they desire to come up. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, members of the council. My name is Chris Poe. My office address is 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300 in Des Moines. I'm an attorney on behalf of MidAmerican Energy Company. We are in full agreement with the staff recommendation on this item. I can tell you personally that for the last four years, MidAmerican has worked with your staff, and your staff has been very helpful to us in finding a site. MidAmerican does not have condemnation power to have a site here with absent private agreement of landowners. And we've received an agreement with this landowner to build the site here, but there is a specific condition that we will need your assistance with. And that is that they've conditioned our agreement on the city acquiring the buffer ground for the sanitary sewer treatment plant to the south. That's their condition, and so we have two items on the agenda tonight. This site and also our site to the north, which is another site that we previously acquired. It is now our backup plan. If we can get this site done, this is the one that we prefer. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have. As far as the zoning change agreement, I think MidAmerican has signed it and has sent it to the staff. I think we're waiting on the signature from the landowners to the zoning change agreement. And Mike Pugh's here, and he's going to speak, I believe, as the condition of the purchase agreement of the purchase of the buffer ground. But I'm happy to answer any questions you'd have of MidAmerican on this application.
Don't hear any now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Please state your name and your affiliation.
My name is Mike Pugh. Good evening, everyone. I'm an attorney, and I represent the landowner, which is two entities, but they're wholly related, Lake Calvin Properties and Sycamore Apartments. I'm here to voice support for this particular application. It's been several months since we have been talking to MidAmerican and Mr. Poe about the site. Just to give you a little bit of background on sort of the sense of timing and the contingency that Mr. Poe's mentioned. Right now, the site is designed so that the stormwater runoff from the site is by easement to the wetlands area to the east of this particular site. And all that is fine if the city ends up acquiring the buffer area. It's about, I think, 1.77 acres of easement area. The landowner has some concerns that if that, the rest of that buffer area is not acquired by the city, that we've granted an easement now over the area that's really going to restrict future development of that site. If the landowner is going to retain it and develop that area- develop that area. So, I would encourage the city, if that transaction is going to happen, that we begin those discussions, really without delay. We're under a little bit of a constraint in our purchase agreement. We have an August 1 contingency date, and with the easement running across the property, we do need to have some assurances that the property will be acquired by the city. Otherwise, it poses some issues for us. We've discussed retaining the stormwater on-site and having Mid-American buy some more of the property. There's some obstacles to doing that with subdivision and rezoning and some other items that have come our way or the applicant's way. So, I just want to alert you to that, that particular issue. With regard to this site, as it relates to the other site that's on the agenda at nine E, obviously, we feel that this site is a much better site. You know, it's always good to put a substation like this in an area before there's houses there, and this is where this site goes. The other north site, which the staff does not recommend, PNC unanimously did not recommend, has multifamily living there with several tenants that have lived there for literally decades, and the transmission lines would essentially encircle that site. So, we feel that this is clearly the better site, and we would encourage you to support that. The conditional zoning agreement, I will have that. Mr. Gordon, who's my client representative, he thought the meeting started at seven, but he's on his way down. He just sent me a text, so I will stay here until he comes, get his signature, and get you the conditional zoning agreement. With that said, if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so, council, I will not close the public hearing, but I do want to go ahead and, if there's any questions for either staff or for anyone that's presented so far. I won't close the public hearing, but I do want to give the public an opportunity to come forth if anyone wants to address this topic.
I do have a question for staff, because apparently, you've all been working this out. Are there plans, then, for the city to purchase this easement?
Yeah, we're looking at that. We think it's a prudent thing for us to look at as we anticipate residential growth in that area, trying to buffer the wastewater plant a little bit. So, we're going through the appraisal process, and until that process is done, we can't really engage in the back-and-forth with the property owner, but we do have an aligned interest there. Of course, that would come back to you for approval if we're able to get into an agreement with the property owner.
So, it sounded like there are some time deadlines to, I mean, the appraisal process, but do you all have any sense as to whether this is likely to happen within this deadline that was just voiced of August 1?
I believe I heard Mr. Pugh say there's an August 1 deadline, and yes, presumably, it could be resolved before then.
Any other questions before we get public comment? All right, welcome.
Hi. I just had a point of inquiry for...
And please state your name.
Oh, sorry. Elliot Micklin, City Liaison. I was just curious if the energy stored at the substation will be sourced from coal resources or solar and like more renewable resources? Yeah.
I appreciate that. We can't answer questions, but we appreciate you coming forth. Anyone else like to address this topic?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello. Please stop lying about not being able to answer questions. You can't answer questions, so that person that Bruce just lied to, we just want you to know that under state code, the city council can't answer your questions.
Noah, please talk about the topic at hand. If you don't...
Future reference, don't listen to his lies. Thank you.
All right, any other, anyone else from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, so I'm not going to close the public hearing because of the CZA, but we are going to go on to the next item, which is going to be item number nine B, zoning code amendment, various minor code changes, ordinance amending Title 14, zoning code Title 15 subdivision code and Title 18, site plan review of the Iowa City Code to clarify requirements and ensure compliance with changes to state law. I'm going to open the public hearing, and we'll welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is a process we try to do annually. It may occur less frequently, but it's something that we, as staff, try to accomplish annually, and we call it our code cleanup. The items that we bundle together for our code cleanup tend to be what we would consider very minor, not changes in policy, generally things that are meant to clarify how we're already operating. Sometimes we find definitions or word choices are less than clear, so this is our chance to rework those. We keep a list as we go through our daily work, and when we find these, we add them to the list. The other thing that we try to accomplish with the annual code cleanup is things that are mandated for us to do by the state and changes that have occurred at the state that alter how we operate. So, in this particular package, there are 11 items. There'll be another code cleanup item on a future agenda that is related to historic preservation items that are separately working its way through Historic Preservation Commission. So, this particular package, as I said, contains those minor code cleanups, and I'll walk through just briefly what's in here. The first is a pedestrian circulation, so included in your packet was kind of a summary and a reason for why this is. We typically try to ensure connected neighborhoods and sidewalks are an important part of a connected neighborhood for circulation, not just for cars, but for people. We typically do that through our processes that have to do with rezoning and/or plating, but occasionally, we get infill projects that aren't going through those projects. They're already zoned appropriately, and they don't need to be further platted, and in that case, we don't really have a mechanism for encouraging the connections that should happen. For the most part, we're fairly successful in voluntarily getting those. This would just be the cleanup that allows staff to include sidewalks being added as properties redevelop or undergo infill. The next one has to do with clarifying applicability of form-based code design review. When we started with this language in our code, we only had the riverfront crossings form-based code, so when we said form-based code, we didn't specify that it was riverfront crossings. Now, we have additional form-based code districts, so this is just simply changing the language to be more precise about which one we're talking about and when. Again, this is another item that's mandated by the state, has to do with the requirements for granting a variance. State case laws dictated that we change our approval criteria, so this would just bring us in alignment with requirements by the state. The next one is about utility-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems. This is how to measure some of the distances that are required to be measured in our ordinance, just to be more clear about what two things we're measuring between. This is a, the next one is about bicycle parking spaces. Staff already, as we review site plans, provide feedback to applicants about the correct design of bicycle parking. We use industry standards that are developed by national organizations for bike ped planning. This addition to our code would just be to put in our code upfront what we're going to tell an applicant anyway when they go to design their bike parking for their site plan review, so trying to get ahead of and give more information to our applicants so they know what staff's expectations are early in the process. The next one is removing special provisions for privately-owned signs in public places. So, our sign code gets into details about signs on city-owned property that doesn't need to, so this is just eliminating redundancy in the control over signs. The next one is a definition, clarifying definitions for family. This is, again, mandated by state law changes. We did go through a code cleanup previously when state law changed in 2018. This is just catching a few more of those definitions for clarity. Next one has to do with definitions for trees. Fixes in oversight and definitions where there were overlapping heights in what was considered a small tree and a large tree. The changes are meant to separate large and small into separate categories from each other, but also relies on best practices per our forestry division to lower the height for some recommendations. Again, this is a small impact, will have small impact on the number of trees planted there. Next one has to do with, again, a state law change and aligning our code with requirements for the way we do and do not regulate short-term rental standards. So, because of some changes that came through in 2020 related to short-term rentals, we had to adjust some of our code language to get away from defining them based on lengths of stay and things like that. It does create a single bed and breakfast definition, so our code had sort of antiquated, or not maybe antiquated, but original wording about bed and breakfast, and now, as we know, a lot of those things have morphed into online and operate differently, and so this is bringing us into compliance with state code regarding the regulation of such. And then, also, clarifying boundary line adjustment standards. This formalizes and clarifies an existing process that staff has used for boundary line adjustments. We have a application process that we already use and a very defined review process. This is just getting it into our code, again, so that it's clear in the code for those who like to read that kind of thing, what we're doing. So, next steps, these are zoning code amendments coming to you from Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff recommended these proposed changes, as I said, the pool of things that we keep track of, and at their April 20 meeting, by a vote of six to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval. I'm happy to try to answer questions, but I'll tell you my technical expert on this is Kirk, so if you have a question I can't answer, I might have to bring back some answers from Kirk.
I think you're going to get away. All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. And could I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
All right, council discussion.
I just appreciate that staff keeps track of these things so that things can get cleaned up on a regular basis.
I got a kick out of the definition of a tree.
Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Nine C is zoning code amendment, private utilities in P1 zones, ordinance amending Title 14 zoning code to allow private basic utility uses in P1 zones to standardize the public zone section and to amend basic utility improvement criteria. And this is second consideration. Staff has requested expedited action.
So, I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item nine D is zoning code amendment, drinking establishments, ordinance to amend Title 14 zoning regarding drinking establishments. This is second consideration, and staff has requested expedited action. Could I get a motion to waive second consideration, please?
I move, pardon, I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item nine E, conditional use permit, north of Country, County Lane, a letter of recommendation to the Johnson County Board of Adjustments regarding a conditional use permit application for an electrical substation north of Country Lane and west of Sycamore Greenway in unincorporated Johnson County. And could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Burgess.
All right, and we're going to welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned, this is the second of two potential sites Mid-American is considering. This is the northern one, and as you mentioned, along Country Lane. I'm shown here in the dark, the dark black line in this case is the site, so it's immediately north of Country Lane, west of the Sycamore Greenway, and just off of Soccer Park Road, approximately five-point acres. It is inside the city's growth area, but is still located in unincorporated Johnson County. So, this is a case that comes before you because the county's rules require that conditional use permits get a recommendation from the city. It's not a requirement of our fringery agreement, but it's a requirement of county code. This shows its current zoning in the county. This exhibit shows the footprint of the substation, and that green line would be that property boundary that was previously the black line in the other exhibit, and then also shows in kind of the color lines, the location of the transmission lines as they would come into and out of the substation. This is a close-up a little bit of that site. Again, on the far-left side of the screen is the extension of Public Road that would be required in gray to connect to the driveway in white that extends across your screen to the site. As I mentioned before, we review these things against our current and future land uses. The subject parcel will likely be included in the future expansion of the city's limits as in the South District. It's indicated, there's no structure currently on this particular site, but it is surrounded by development, let me go back a slide here and show you, in the city. So, what's not bright yellow here is city-owned land, so the RM12 to the south, the RS8 to the east, and some of the interim districts to the west are in the city. And as I said, it's in the South District, and the future land use plan map identifies this as appropriate for residential development and has a form-based code designation for it, should it come into the city through annexation and be redeveloped. City's analysis includes several elements to make this a less desirable site than the previous site to the south as far as the city's position is. One is that it's immediately adjacent to the Sycamore Greenway, and as you can see, some of those transmission lines coming in and through do impact the Greenway. And the Greenway has got a trail through it that's used by city residents and others in the community. There is an existing multifamily residential development directly to the south, and I believe, as one of the speakers said in the previous application, that's rental, but it does have tenants that have lived there for many years, regardless of your tenancy and length, that it is a place where people do live, and so it would have an impact there coming in to a neighborhood that's already started to develop. Those transmissions lines would completely encircle that residential development along all of their sides to kind of come in and go out of that site. As I showed in the previous site plan snapshot, there is the proposed driveway access to the substation. It would be very long, and it's not typical of what we would prefer to see as the neighborhood develops, where there'd be a long driveway kind of running parallel to the street network that would eventually hopefully develop in a grid in this neighborhood, so it's less than ideal in that circumstance. And then, also, this particular layout makes it difficult to integrate the substation into the future vision of the South District Form-Based Code, as I mentioned. So, this is a conditional use permit. The final deciders are the county, but it does come through a recommendation process at the city. Site plan review, because it's a large site, would be required by our fringery agreement, so if the county were to pursue this, allow this, and the site would develop staff. The city would still have a chance to make comment on that site plan, but the construction and all of that would be in the county. So, based on analysis as presented, staff did recommend denial of this proposed application, and at its May 4 meeting, by a vote of six to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended denial of the application, as I mentioned, because this is going to the county, and they're the ultimate deciders that are included in the... including the dedication of the extension of Soccer Park Road right-of-way to the city so that there's a public access to that site, and city review of the site plan per the fringe agreement. And then also the way their transmission lines would need to lay out, they'll actually need to get city approval for them to cross the trail network. They would need to run the lines not just in the right-of-way, but across city property as well. So that concludes my staff report. Happy to answer questions.
I hear nothing. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic?
Assistant Mayor, members of the council, Chris Poe is again, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300 Des Moines for MidAmerican Energy. You can see from this plan, this is our backup plan now for substation. It was our first plan, but it gave rise to the second plan, because I don't know if we can put back up here, I don't know how to use your computer, Danielle, I'm afraid. I might start a fire.
Don't be that.
The map.
This one or?
No, the area map. There we go. The area that's encircled in purple there is multifamily ground that happens to be owned by Mr. Gordon in his interests, and Mr. Pew, who's here, who happened to have the land to the south. So this plan became sort of the mother of invention of getting us to the south side of Lehman Avenue. But as we explained in item 9A, we do need the city's assistance to finish up buying the sanitary sewer buffer park. So our plan with this is to take the recommendation that the city is giving of denial, and we're gonna sit on it. We're not gonna go to the county with it. We're hoping that 9A will work out and that we can use that site, and we would not proceed with this to the county. Meanwhile, we just want to have all our steps done with the city so that if we have to go to the county and it doesn't work out, then we can take that option. It's not our intention to take this option. Instead, we'd rather work on the one that's to the south. I think, if you have questions, me, I'd be glad to answer them, but I think the zoning change agreement for 9A has now been delivered. So if you want to take care of 9A too, you might be able to do that.
For the benefit of council, I do have before me a fully executed conditional zoning agreement for 9A. And so when we are done with this item, Mr. Mayor, I will suggest you return to the public hearing on 9A.
Great. I'm happy to answer any questions you have here on 9E, or 9A again, if you want.
Mr. Poe, do you happen to know, sorry, over here, do you happen to know if the energy that would be managed through the substation, wherever it be located, would be generated from coal sources or renewable sources, or what the mix would be?
I don't know the answer to that. What I can tell you is the existing transmission line, which is in kind of bluish-purple going to the south, that feet would be going right past the 9A site, that transmission line has been there since 1962 in time. So whatever electricity is going through the grid, be it coal, solar, whatever, is going through that, those lines. And the goal of the substation is to transform the power down to residential and commercial voltage that can be used. The 161 lines that have been out there since 1962, those can't be plugged into the electricity grid as far as residential and commercial. So it's a mix of all power, but it's all running through those existing transmission lines that have been there for years.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the, want to address, that's a part of that team? You're a member of public?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We're gonna open it up for public discussion, so come on up.
Sorry about that. My name's Tim Lehman. I've got my little, I'm gonna put in the box there. I'm Tim Lehman. I'm one of the three owners of the property that at one time was the, was site number one over there, which would be north of the Country Lane Apartments. And we had been working with MidAmerica for two years now on that site, and I feel bad for MidAmerica. They spent a lot of money, and we've renegotiated a couple of times because we needed some more land for some more streets, which the city told them they needed. And as you can see there, it's open on three sides. We've got the buffer to the east side over there, the Greenway, the kind of where the walking trails are, and there's a good-sized buffer there. And then the rest of our property is farm ground right now, so there's nothing to the north or the west side of it. So a little disappointed that we've lost our site, and we're now number two versus number one, but, and I didn't find out about this until just a couple of weeks ago, because I was unaware that, of the second site or what was going on there. Just wanted to state my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Would it make sense to go back and finish 9A before and then come back to this one, just to do them sort of in the order they were presented? Because it sounds like this later one was not recommended, but the first one was, and so to kind of clear that off and then, I don't know, maybe that doesn't make sense, but just for the sake of clarity?
Yeah, oh, I totally understand for the sake of clarity and so forth. I'm just trying to think if council can do that, given that there's a motion made and seconded. That's maybe not. But if it's okay, it'd be great to close this out and then move it forward, but.
So probably not.
I mean, my preference would be we finish at this end. I understand the timing issue that you're identifying.
Sure.
But if council feels strongly about it, we could do that.
Not strongly, no.
Okay.
Are we ready for a vote? If no other comments?
Just to be clear on which thing we're voting for?
Yes, I want to, yeah, so the motion is to approve a letter of recommendation, but we're gonna do a denial.
Right. Yeah, to approve a letter recommending denial. It's confusing.
Yes, to approve the, to approve a letter of, the recommendation to, it's, we're, to approve the denial.
We're saying yes to the letter.
Saying yes to the letter, yes.
Saying yes to the, yes, saying yes to the denial letter, if that's what you choose. All right. Everybody clear? Row call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passed, a seven to zero. We're gonna go back to 9A, which is rezoning south of Lehman Avenue and west of Sycamore Greenway. Ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 4.7 acres of property located south of Lehman Avenue and west of the Sycamore Greenway from interim development multifamily residential to neighborhood public. And I am going to, well, the public hearing is already open, and so any other staff comments? Any other comments from the applicants? Any other comments from the public on this item?
So now that we have the signed CZA, that means everything is complete that you were talking about, Danielle?
Yes, we have what we need to proceed now.
Okay, thank you.
Understanding that the contingency that Mr. Pew identified remains, and that's part of it.
Right.
Or, I'm sorry, that's part of their purchase agreement, not part of this, but that's good information for us to have.
All right. So if no one else from the public wants to make a comment at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Alter.
All right, council discussion.
Seems like there's been a huge amount of effort to make this work, and I'm, I think that this sets up, you know, future development and in keeping with the South District vision and the zoning. So I'm happy that this has been able to be worked out, and thank you for all of your hard work to do that.
And hope we can make the final little piece work.
Yes.
Row call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item 9F, conditional use permit, 5010 American Legion Road. A letter of recommendation to the Johnson County Board of Adjustment for an application submitted for a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit located at 5010 American Legion Road in unincorporated Johnson County. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Bergus.
All right, and we'll welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a conditional use permit in the county, in unincorporated Johnson County. Again, their code requires us to make a recommendation on this, not our fringe area. This particular site is shown here in kind of that green highlight to the left-hand side of your screen, one of those lots along American Legion Road. The request is for the property owner to be able to add an accessory dwelling unit to their property. This is a county zoning, is shown as residential, and this is outside our growth area. Again, it was, we look at and do our analysis, we anticipate what the current and future land use would be. It's developed as residential, it's not in our growth boundary, it's not likely to be annexed into the city in the near future. However, just as a thought experiment, our code as it currently is written would allow an accessory dwelling unit here as long as it met the other requirements of the ownership structure. Who's to say what that is at the time? It does eventually annex into the city, but in this case, this is in the county, so is subject to their rules. It aligns with both the county's future land use map and our fringe area agreement. Just to show the property, this is the aerial image of the existing structure and the plans that were submitted by the owner for the addition of the ADU attached to the existing building. Again, this is a conditional use permit, goes to county for a final decision, and any construction would be overseen by the building permitting process at Johnson County. So based on this analysis, staff did recommend approval, and at its May 18 meeting by a vote of four to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval of the application. And that's it for staff report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
Well, here's an accessory dwelling in it. Sort of way out there, but you know.
Row call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item 10 is Gilbert Street pavement repair, Kranick Railroad crossing. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Gilbert Street pavement repair, Kranick Railroad crossing approach project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing the city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and welcome, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Scott Silver is Assistant City Engineer. So this is a joint project between the city and the Kranick Railroad. It's located on Gilbert Street, immediately south of its intersection with Maiden Lane. The impetus of this project is Kranick's need to replace an at-grade railroad crossing that is in poor condition. While Kranick is replacing the actual crossing itself, the contractor that has ordered for this project will perform additional payment repair and a replacement on both sides of the crossing, upgrade non-ADA compliant curb ramps and approaches, and install storm sewer to improve drainage. Given the nature of how railroad crossings are replaced, Gilbert Street will need to be completely closed to traffic, vehicular traffic. With this being the case, a detour route utilizing Kirkwood Avenue, Clinton Street, and Dubuque Street, Benton Street, Riverside Drive, and Burlington Street will be in place during the construction of this project. Because of this impact will have on traffic in the downtown area of the city, this closure will be limited to approximately three weeks. Estimated construction cost of this project is $150,000. In terms of the schedule, we are hosting the public hearing tonight, June 6. Bid letting will be on July 5. We will bring this back to you for award at the July 12 council meeting, because our construction is planned to start early August, and then finish up before the commencement of the University of Iowa Fall semester in mid to late August. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
I think there are no questions. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Bergus.
Council discussion.
As much as I fear the closing of that road, it truly is a major north-south intersection, so I'm glad to hear that you're gonna do the best you can to shorten that period of time, but it'll be great to have it in good repair.
Really needs to be done.
Row call, please.
Bergus?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number 11 is additional social justice and racial equity grant allocations for fiscal year 2022. This is a resolution adopting the additional social justice and racial equity grant allocations for fiscal year 2022. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Alter. Second, Weiner.
All right. And any staff comments about this?
I'll just briefly make comment, Mayor. This is an item that was before you, a few meetings back, when you approved the initial round of funding. At that meeting, you had asked the Human Rights Commission to go back and recommend additional awards based on $25,000 in extra funding that would come from the Black Lives Matter set aside from 2020. Our human rights staff reached out to those organizations that did not receive funding initially to see who still had a viable project, and two organizations responded to that. And those are the two organizations that the Human Rights Commission have recommended for additional grants. That's the Iowa Chapter of American Student Dental Association and the Iowa City Catholic Worker House. There's some details in your packet about what those grants would fund, and I'd do my best to answer questions that you have.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for staff? Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come to the podium. If you're online, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Seeing no one, council discussion. All right. So I think it's, you know, so important that the social justice and racial equity grant is available within our community. There are organizations that really do a lot of hard work, that really do support and promote some of the initiatives that this was created to do. I am happy to see that we, you know, allocated another $25,000, and unfortunately, only two individuals did respond, and I'm not sure some of the rationale there. Sometimes if things come through application, sometimes people don't see it in time. I don't know the, you know, maybe some of the challenges there, but thanks to the commissioners for reaching out and having some discussions surrounding this. So as I do look at the two applicants that did respond, I think the Iowa Chapter of American Student Dental Association, what they're wanting to do is really reach out and have an impact on students, and to reflect on their own biases and learn about racial injustices that exist, you know, even today. And I like the opportunity for this project to move forward, so I'm gonna be supporting that. The Iowa City Catholic Worker House, I am, you know, when I read this, I understand there's a new program, and it's an immigrant-led initiative that will publish a Spanish-language newsletter and train immigrant workers in community leadership. So as I read through this and what they're wanting to do, we have access to their application, all of us, there is some concern that I do have with this one. One, it states including lobbying, letter writing, and direct action. One, it states including lobbying, letter writing, and direct action. So when I kind of look at what happens at the state, some of the state laws don't allow for funding to go directly to a lobbying-type of organization. And in our role here, I think we have experienced, quite frankly, the lobbying that the Catholic Worker House has shared. I am reminded that people in our public need to have real factual information, and also, when I think about how partnerships work within this community, I think conversations must be had when people are having some concern, especially if we're talking about an entity, that it be presented to the council, whether it's to staff or to individual councils. And for this one here, I am not recommending any funding. And what I would suggest is that since only two applicants actually applied, I would suggest to this council that we not open it back up, because I think people did have opportunity to apply, but we just award the Iowa Chapter of American Student Dental Association, but that's my thought on this.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the members of the Human Rights Commission for your time, energy, and commitment that each of you always puts into your work on the commission. It's apparent that you put a lot of thought into how you award the funds that are allocated for distribution by your commission. But with that said, I do not agree with the amount of $19,560 to the Iowa City Catholic Worker House. Over the years, I have realized that you can learn a lot about people by what they say or do. It is usually an accurate indicator of whether they are deserving of your trust and confidence. Trustworthy people are respectful. They don't resort to intimidation, humiliation tactics. It is true that the Catholic Worker House has helped to feed and house people in need and have done that very well. However, in the past few years, they have come before our council, other councils, the Board of Supervisors, the meetings, and showing intimidation tactics, attempting to belittle, discredit us in public and in the news media, as well as towards the Center for Worker Justice. For that reason, I can't in good conscience approve of this award to the Catholic Worker House.
One of the things that I viewed these applications through the lens was, I was on the HCDC for one and a half terms and saw a number of applications come across. And while HRC has their own way of adjudicating and assessing the recommendations that come to us, nevertheless, I think that there's some kind of commonalities for community-based projects, and some of the lens, some of the things that I take into consideration is sort of looking at its history of the agency, of the project itself, its possibility for sustainability over time, its collaborations with others in the community, are there multiple funding sources? Again, that's kind of irrelevant in this situation. To my mind, this is such a new project, and I completely applaud the fact that actually, as a grassroots organization, you are able to mobilize and do so much. I have concerns, though, about the project and the way it would move forward, because it's a very different measure, or a different, I'm not sure how to phrase this. This has now become much more structured, and I have not seen proof in the past of there being structured, organized activities. So from that lens, I have less confidence in the sustainability of this project. So that's where I'm at. I'm not seeing this as necessarily the right fit for this amount of money.
I think I'm going to bring something a little bit different to the conversation, because my background's a little different. First of all, I'd like to say the idea of a Spanish-language newspaper is really cool. Our journalism, background journalism professor, so our country has a really cool history of immigrant-language newspapers, many of which have gone. I mean, you go back 100, 150 years, there's tons and tons of them. Now there's just a handful. So I think in that regard, I think that's really cool. I support local journalism. You know, I personally subscribe to all of the existing journalistic outlets who have reporters here in the room. Not brown-nosing, I promise. And should there be a Spanish-language newspaper, I would, and open for subscriptions, I would subscribe to that as well. Probably have to get my kids to help me, because my Spanish is really poor. Theirs is better than mine. That said, I don't think it's the place of a city government or a local body of government to fund a newspaper. I think that creates all kinds of other issues. You know, so while I personally support it, I don't think that that's the business of a city to say, a local government, newspapers, journalism, needs to be independent of the people they talk about and cover, and I just, I couldn't, you know. So that trips this up for me.
Well, I'd like to say first thanks to the commission for reviewing these two proposals and to the applicants as well. I too have some concerns with the Catholic Worker House proposal, and I have really admired the work of the Catholic Worker House over the years. I found them inspiring in their work. This particular proposal, though, I think, seems overly ambitious. It has, there's a lot of pieces to it. You have the newsletter, as well as the trainings in community leadership, identifying issues, and then taking action to address them and identifying what some of those actions are. It seems to me that if someone were to want to, if I were to accept that, I would really like to see that demonstrated capacity within the organization to be able to pull that off. It just seems like a lot, a lot of effort there, and I would want to see a better understanding of what the project's schedule and the cost breakdown, work plans, demonstrated capacity, so that we could all be sure that it could be properly delivered. So for now, I would not support the project as it's proposed.
So I have to say that, you know, and while I may not agree with everything that was brought before us and the way it was brought before us, I really admired the skills and the organizational ability that was brought to the table and brought a lot of people into our council chambers, to the Board of Supervisors, who probably never would have had, who may well not have had a voice or representation but for those efforts. So for me, the portion of this that I would be interested in approving is the community organizing portion, to give people the skills and the capacity to continue that sort of self-representation and understanding of how to function with local government and making sure that you vote and so forth. I share the concerns about the newsletter and supporting, but I would be willing to award a lesser amount to continue the organizing skills, because I think those are vital to anyone in this country, anyone in this city, anyone in this county, who wants to participate as a resident.
I think I agree that those are, I mean, it's near and dear to my heart. I have a similar concern about the city picking and choosing which organizations get to train their, get our support in training their activists. I actually think that's great. I mean, it's a weird place to find myself in, because I agree with everything you said, and I think that the stuff on the application about helping people find homes and supporting that is all great, but again, I have kind of the same thing. It's like, as a governmental body, do we have a job, or is it wise for us to say, okay, we're going to support these training efforts as opposed to this other organization? And I'm finding myself not terribly comfortable with doing that, kind of a similar, not exactly the same as with the newsletter, but kind of not completely dissimilar either, but I appreciate the point you made.
You know, I think my comments earlier that I made, the example that I would give is if an organization wanted to follow suit and come before the council and request some money for the same type of request, I mean, we would have given some money to one organization, and now we would have to really consider giving money to another organization, even if that organization did not fundamentally represent our needs. I mean, I think the easiest-case scenario would be if KKK members came before this council and requested some funding for their lobbying acts. Would council, we would be in a position to really consider that, and so that is why I don't, that's another rationale for why I don't support this.
Thank you for articulating that, Mayor. And Sean, I've been just listening to the conversation and feeling uneasy about it, and I think that's why. I don't want to set that precedent for picking and choosing the kind of advocacy that we think is worthy or unworthy.
On a personal level, I would love to do that, but as a representative of the community and that, I don't feel that's what I should be doing, so.
And I think similar to kind of where my mind was on the Center for Worker Justice expanded proposal, I think just knowing that there are other funding sources out there that maybe don't have that concern or constraint, that given that this project was able to continue to be viable through even the delay in the application process.
I did hear support for the Iowa Chapter of American Student Dental Association. I do not hear majority support of Iowa City Catholic Worker House. I did want to just clarify, if anyone else was considering a partial, I heard one request for partial. Is there anyone else that would consider partial funding of the Iowa Catholic Worker House, Iowa City Catholic Worker House?
I don't think we have enough information to go down that road, Mayor.
Okay, all right. So then the other, so I'm going to take that as no. And then the other question that I have is, so we'll have to amend this?
Right, we would need a motion to amend, a second, and any vote on the motion to amend to exclude the Catholic Worker House award, and then, of course, the return to the original motion to approve what remains, which would be for the Iowa Chapter of the American Student Dental Association award.
Okay, and then before we end this opportunity, counsel, are we, there were only two applicants at this point, did we want to do anything further with those funds, or do we just leave it as is? I personally think we just leave it as is for now.
I mean, they went back, what we heard is they went back to all the other applicants, and these were the only two who still had projects that could potentially go forward.
Okay.
Out of curiosity, would the money just roll over into next year's grant pool?
It was coming from our.
Yeah, it's coming from a separate source.
That's right.
And that money is protected, so in a sense, yes, but it just wouldn't be tied to this grant process.
Any other council discussion? Could I get a motion to amend?
To amend this motion to exclude the grant to the Iowa City Catholic Worker House?
I move to amend the motion to exclude the Catholic Worker House, Iowa City Catholic Worker House.
Moved by Alter.
Second, Taylor.
Seconded by Taylor. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
No.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed at six to one. Could I get a motion to?
Already have the motion.
Say that again?
You already have the motion to, the underlying motion has already been moved by council member Alter and seconded by Weiner, and so unless there's further discussion, you're ready for a roll call vote on the original motion.
Okay.
As amended.
Okay, so we're ready for a vote on the original motion as amended. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 12 is American Rescue Plan Act, Think Iowa City Tourism Recovery Subaward. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a state and local fiscal recovery fund grant agreement with the Iowa City Correville Convention and Visitors Bureau to replace hotel-motel tax revenue loss during the COVID-19 pandemic and develop and administer a tourism and visitor recovery grant program. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
All right, and staff comments?
I'll be brief, Mayor. This is, this goes all the way back to last September when we initially rolled out some preliminary ARPA recommendations. One of those recommendations was to bolster the tourism industry that was impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So before you is a $250,000 agreement with Think Iowa City, our local convention and visitors bureau, and the use of these funds is divided into two pieces. The first $125,000 is for revenue replacement, so we are able to measure the lost revenue that the city would have normally transferred over to Think Iowa City, and that was roughly $125,000. They rely on hotel-motel tax revenue, so we were able to look at hotel-motel tax revenue pre-pandemic and then during the pandemic, and again, that's about $125,000. That money would be placed or given to Think Iowa City to support their general operations, and that's building the tourism industry within the Iowa City Correville North Liberty area. So that's, again, the first $125,000. The second $125,000 would be for a tourism recovery program, and this is envisioned to be a grant program to support tourism within the city limits, so we're taking it to a more micro level there. But the staff at Think Iowa City would be able to support local events, help bring in outside events into Iowa City, basically work with community partners to bolster tourism over the next couple of years. The president of Think Iowa City, Josh Schomburg, is here and can talk to you a little bit more about how he might go about administering that grant program, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the use of ARPA funds, if you have them.
No questions, great. Yes, we welcome you, Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. Chair Person Porter here. I would, as a tourism guy, would echo everybody coming out for Juneteenth and Pride events next weekend. I appreciate certainly all the assistance from Jeff and Cassie and Rachel on this state and fiscal recovery application. Obviously, the effects of the pandemic were pretty dramatic across all industries and the economy, and certainly the local hospitality and tourism industry was not spared. Area hotel occupancies, which are normally north of 75%, quickly dropped to below 10% across the entire community, and two and a half years later, we're just starting to see some of the return of some of those tourism sectors, like conferences and meetings and other activities. The ARPA legislation clearly recognized the tourism industry as a proper-use example of these recovery and stimulus funds, and that will certainly be the focus of this Iowa City-specific grant program. It will be targeted towards events and activities and programs that provide a direct return to Iowa City tourism hospitality community, but also indirectly provide an impact here on the larger area. It'll amplify and ignite some of our most signature festivals and events, but we'll also be using the program to incubate and incentivize additional opportunities. Our current plan would be to roll this program out beginning in August. We've already had several meetings. We've already had several meetings and discussions. We are very familiar with running grant programs, having been around for the past 40-plus years and doing this sort of thing, and that's exactly what we'll be treating this program here in Iowa City through the Recovery Act program. It's been done many places around the country and then just in a couple of places in Iowa City through the ARPA fund. So happy to answer any questions that you may have and thank you again to the whole staff for helping us work through that application.
Thank you, Josh. Could you just clarify for me? I'm just a little confused on the wording on this. Jeff mentioned a couple of times within the Iowa City area, within city limits, and you mentioned Iowa City specific.
Yep.
The resolution starts out by talking about spurring economic activity in the Iowa City area and then further down in the resolution talks about within the Iowa City limits and activity within the city. So as a geographic area, these funds are going, when it talks about outside of the area, are you talking about the hotel and motel, the funds that are going to go to them to help bring their funds, their reserves back up? But the tourism activity is the Iowa, specific Iowa City?
Yeah, so the first half is certainly to replenish the lost revenue that we have, but we're an organization that represents the entirety of the community, Iowa City, Correville, North Liberty, and soon to be University Heights now that they have a hotel, but that's a few months away, I think. But the program we're going to run is going to be specific to the city of Iowa City and the city limits within Iowa City. So we're only going to allow applications and incentivize additional tourism activities and programming within the city limits. It will not be, applicants in Correville, North Liberty will not be eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Josh, we heard from Kate Moreland earlier that the Better Together 2030, you know, report is coming out soon and I know Think Iowa City is a partner in that. So is this program at all informed by that process or can you speak to that a little bit?
No, there'll be two separate things, but we do have also in our general fund, you know, we're certainly a partner, an equal partner to the Better Together 2030 Initiative. And yes, that program is within a week or two of actually being unveiled. I know many folks have been a part of it. There are some key areas that really align well with what we do and then some areas that are completely better suited for other agencies and organizations in this community. And so in some areas, I think we'll do a good job as an organization in playing a convener and bringing and connecting people and getting things moved along, but in other areas, like one of them is, you know, obviously our, you know, the river parks and trails and recreational opportunities are really well suited for our area, us to lead. And so we will certainly be, not through this program, but through our general operation, be providing resources and time and energy to advance the Better Together 2030 Initiative. And we've, you know, that's something that really started between the Business Partnership, ICAT, our organization in downtown district, and that continues to, we continue to see some efficiencies there through our collaboration and I think that's just going to get even better here when we make some announcements here in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Hopefully that answered your question, Laura.
Thank you much. No other questions.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one. Council discussion?
I'm just actually staggered by the fact of what you mentioned with sort of hotel rates being, or not rates, but occupancy being a little north of 70% and dropping down to below 10 and that we still have all of those hotels in the area is a testament to how, lost one, but it could have been so much more given especially what those numbers indicate. So it's just a testament to how well the community and your group in particular, you know, have helped kind of shape and hold people fast, hold entities fast to get through it. So thank you.
I do see this as a vital opportunity for the city. I think the claim has been kind of made for the support. The one thing that I've been very impressed by when we think about tourism, people coming into this community, I have to tell you, there are so many people that come here that wish they didn't have to leave. So the exposure that some of the programming that comes through Think Iowa City, you know, give to those that come here, it really does continue to put us on the map on so many levels. We have the University of Iowa here and other, you know, jobs and things, we need workers. So I really do believe that this is a great investment beyond what we see right here. And the other thing that I'll mention is Think Iowa City has been very intentional in just thinking DEI and being inclusive. And so I've been really appreciative for those efforts as well. Are we ready for roll call? Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 13 is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 13A Civil Service Commission, Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through April 7, 2025. And council discussion. So we have one opening with no gender requirement and we have two applicants.
Both applicants look interesting and perhaps even more significantly are interested, but I was taken by, I think it's Chi Ogboko. It seems her qualifications, she has a background that I think could be well suited for the commission and while I know the other candidate, I believe her name was Ashley, did I get it? She too has sort of an interesting background, but she also had a number of commissions that actually she's sort of placed a little bit higher and she was more in the I can learn and I would like to learn, which is great, but I think that given those two kind of differentiators, that I was more taken by Chi. And I hope that I did not mispronounce the name too horribly.
I agree with that, Megan.
I would agree as well, yes.
It was difficult to choose between the two because like you said, they both seemed like they would, were interested and would do a good job. Like you said, Ashley had listed several that she was interested in, so I would hope that she keeps that interest and we can find her suited to one of those commissions, but it sounds like folks are supportive of, I won't even try her last name, I'll just call her Chi and I hope Chi is correct.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well.
So it seemed like the majority of council is supportive of Chi. So could I get a motion to appoint Chi Ogboko to the Civil Service Commission?
So move, Weiner.
Second.
Oh, second, Laura.
Move by Weiner, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Climate Action Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applicants must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June, July 5, 2022. Senior Senate Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 14, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Public Art Advisory Committee, art or design professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public Art Advisory Committee, art or design professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at item number 15, city council information.
I would remind people that the South District has their diversity market going on every Saturday now for the next several Saturdays, 1:00 to 7:00 PM on Saturdays and you too could get a beautiful bracelet like this from one of the vendors. They have, oh, it's a lot of jewelry booths, great food, wonderful food, music and family of all ages and despite the threat of rain last weekend, I think it did sprinkle a little bit there. Large crowd, so, but lots of space, so you can still distance and I would just encourage everybody to come out and support all those wonderful vendors.
Would just like to recognize Moms Demand Action and all those who organized a Wear Orange Rally this past weekend at Wetherby Park and then did a march down to the diversity market for their efforts and for those that showed up to support smarter gun laws in the wake of so many tragic shootings.
So I'll tag onto that and say that in addition to the Wear Orange event, on the 11th, there will be all across the country, March For Our Lives. They are currently, if you can look up on their website, we literally are marching for our lives and our kids' lives and our BIPOC brothers and sisters' lives and everyone who's been, who's been the victim of so much gun violence. There are currently marches organized for Cedar Rapids, Davenport, and Des Moines. I understand there will be one here as well, it's just not up on the website yet, but I would encourage everyone to show up. And I had the honor of attending the One Iowa Gala in Des Moines as part of the city delegation on Saturday evening. It was a wonderful event. Our mayor was honored. Sicois and the Great Plains Advocacy Group was honored, but to me, and no slight to the mayor, meant that the star of the show was Gabby Smith, who really is a 14-year-old face of courage, standing up to the transgender ban and hatred in the state like none other. She is poised, she is articulate, she is simply amazing and there was tremendous support showed there for her. And finally, sort of on the, moving to the theme of the arts, in addition to having a great arts fest here, I just wanted to note that the James Theater is about to open. It was featured on the front page of the Gazette today. The nolties are providing a great addition to Iowa City in terms of theater space and community space and it's where Riverside Theater was for many years.
Thank you for lifting up all those good events and agree with the diversity market. Please come out and patronize those vendors. They've been fantastic. I did just want to take a minute to reflect on where we were two years ago in June of 2020. Not all of us were here, but it was a very different moment in Iowa City and we all, I know, got comments and questions about a particular incident relating to a police officer striking a young woman in a police car. I don't want to talk about that incident, but I do want to invoke, two years ago, the commitment that the city council made by unanimous resolution, 17 different points, and in the very first one, we made a commitment to reduce the public's reliance on police through the use of unarmed professionals. And if we don't take steps to accelerate reducing armed responses, then these kinds of incidents are going to continue to happen. When an armed response is what we choose for every emergency in our community, then force will always be on the table. And this incident was heartbreaking and I go back two years when our children were tear gassed and that incident, after much inquiry and review and investigation and $50,000 in taxpayer money, didn't violate our policies. It wasn't illegal. These events are the price of policing and I think we can do better in being creative and finding ways to respond to people who are in crisis, to conflicts among individuals, to violence even, and know that it doesn't, community safety has to mean something other than just police.
I apologize for coming in, but if I could add something to that, I would really like to see the capacity of the Guideling Center expanded so that it can, that it has the capacity to deal with a broader variety of people in need.
Any other comments?
This is a different, it's just a small thing, but it's a huge thing. Tomorrow is primary day and I want to encourage everyone to go out and exercise your rights and vote. If you need to find your polling precinct, you can do that through the Secretary of State's website and it's just sos.iowa.gov and scroll through elections to get to where your voting place is. You can find it pretty easily by clicking through. I don't want to apologize for doing it as if it's an afterthought after such poignant and smart words from my fellow counselors, but it also seems fitting too to say, let's do what we can on a day in which we can make a difference and let's continue to keep working.
I'm going to elevate one more time the LGBTQ plus gay pride event that's going to be happening, so go to their website. Also, Juneteenth events, there's a few things happening and this is the city's second year of officially having Juneteenth and so as a city holiday and so please, please, please go out and enjoy and commemorate these events. All right, if nothing more, we're going to move on to item number 16, which is a report on items from our city staff. We'll start with our city manager's office.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Our city attorney.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, and our city clerk. Item number 17, could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
Second, Taylor.
Move by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We are adjourned for the night. Take care.